Good evening, we call the meeting to order. First of all, we have been in executive session since 3:00 P.M. And we did not cover any topic that is not indicated on the published agenda during that time period, there were no decisions made, and there were no votes taken during that session. So I need then for a motion to come from closed session to open session.
I move we execute executive session to open session.
It's moved as their second. It's moved in second, we leave closed session into open session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We go into public section now, and we'll call it order, we please roll call for the President.
Mr. Sherry, President. Mr. Ruiz, President. Mr. Robinson, Chairman.
I'm going to back up because I did that wrong, we should have done a roll call for the moving out of the closed session to open session, so I'm going to go back and ask our secretary, please do that.
Mr. Sherry, President. Yes. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Yes. All right, we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and speak to the flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance is applied by the United States of America, and it's a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The pledge is applied by the State of New Mexico, to the people of our country, to promote friendships among the United Nations.
Thank you. All right, we'll move then into the reports, beginning with Student Council.
All righty. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Romero. I am Anthony, Executive President of Student Council. Today we're going to be talking about additional homecoming items, Red Ribbon Week, our Mayor's Roundtable Meeting, our Children's Project, and upcoming trips. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce you to some of our other members.
My name is Caitlin DiArcia, I'm sophomore Secretary.
Hi, my name is Chloe Johnson, and I'm the junior class vice president.
Hi, I'm Chloe Galván, and I am freshman class vice president.
All righty, and the first thing in our agenda was homecoming. Homecoming ended a little over a month ago, and I wanted to give you guys a little update, a final update to say. And so, on Friday, we did have a lot of activities planned to make up for Thursday. At first, we had a parade which many students enjoyed, and also boosted a lot of spirit. We had a power cuff which juniors surprisingly won. And then we had our homecoming third prep rally. The pep rally was where we also gave the spirit sticks. It's basically given to the class with the most sperrant shows spirit. Sophomores won the underclassmen's spirit stick, and the seniors won the upperclassmen's one. And our last item was the homecoming dance, which went smoothly and without interruption. After the dance ended, so did homecoming week, and we hope you're excited for what we have in store in the future.
So I would be talking about Red Ribbon Week, which will start tomorrow, October 23rd to the 31st. In order to prepare for Red Ribbon Week, we had a marriage roundtable with John Costilla González, Angie Martinez, and Benny Hasso. Student Council came up with a homeroom lesson to learn about drugs and alcohol prevention, and dress up days for the week. So as a requirement of New Mexico Association of Student Councils, we're putting together a children's project for our state competition. And to help further plan, we had a mayor's roundtable meeting with Benny Hasso, Mrs. Padron, and a representative from the Department of Health to discuss ideas.
All right, as many know, we are going to district conference this Thursday. What district conference is, is where everyone from the southwestern part of Mexico, all student council members, meet up in one school or one place, and we basically learn how to improve our leadership and what, how to better our schools. And...
We are also working with broadcaster National Auto Society and JRTC to plan our Hanter Hasko Halloween. And that's all we have, does anybody have any questions?
Where's your district conference meeting?
In...
Los Angeles.
Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you. All right, and we'll move on then to the National Education Association.
Hello, Mr. President, members of the Board, Dr. Romero, afternoon. Enjoying the rainy weather, right? It's been an interesting day, I guess, for the column today with the rain. So, I think as I previously started to talk to you about, like I said, we owe it to our students and to our staff to be the best employers that we can. And one of the issues has been the ESS company coming in and taking over substitutes.
Why don't you say that for that action item that comes up? Do you want to comment on that action item?
But if I do it during the action item, it takes up ten minutes.
Yeah, but this should be just as well like you ought to.
This is one of the things that we are...
Make it very short, this is for pre-approach.
We can't hear you.
I'm just commenting, her comments are more relevant to one of the action items that's coming up than what she's, in this portion, so if she's got to do something now, it needs to be very brief, is what I said.
That's all, I'll be brief. So, any admittance position on this is really simple, and I've expressed this directly to Dr. Romero a couple times. We currently pay substitutes that have no college eight dollars an hour. Walmart starts employees at twelve dollars an hour, okay? Is that providing the best people in the classroom for our students? Thank you.
I actually have one. I guess, when I ask you a question?
That's fine.
Well, I, can I make a comment then? Actually, I had a question, in last meeting you talked about community schools, and that seems to be more relevant in helping the community and the students, and you would have an update for us today?
For community schools? Yes, so unfortunately, the person that we are working with, with NEA, has fallen down on the job. This weekend, I'll actually be at a conference and able to talk to the President of NEA New Mexico, because we have not received the 500-plus paper copies, we have not received the data from them, and in fact, I found out on Thursday that he didn't even pick up the data.
So again, we don't have an update?
No. And like I said, I did not find out until Thursday that he has not even picked them up. So, like I said, I will be going this weekend and talking to somebody at NEA about colleague and that, because it is, it is a lot of data to have 500 of those to go through, roughly. I think there's a little more than that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's no parent advisory committee to report tonight. So move to the Board Spotlight, which I was going to do tonight, I thought I was going to have two big reports to give tonight, but they're both basically the same thing. I attended, or we attended, the Region 8 School Board Meeting a few weeks ago, and then I was part of the School Board Association's Resolutions Committee in Albuquerque just recently, to look at items for the School Board Association to work on with the legislature when it goes into session after the first of the year. But as it actually turns out, both events basically talked about the same thing, which is, I'm sure most in the room will understand, is the almost $2 billion surplus money that the district, the state has suddenly come up with and how to spend it for next year, and the school security. That seems to be the two big focuses right now on much of anything you talk about, and so that was basically the theme, most of the resolutions that were submitted by school districts around the state all dealt with those two, those two issues. Everybody has their ideas about how that money ought to be spent, so that's going to become the big issue for the legislature to try to figure out. And pretty much the resolutions that, or the information coming from the region meeting was the same thing that we as districts need to make sure our input is up there for Santa Fe, so that Deming Schools is represented, and our feelings about legislation and how the money's going to be spent needs to be clearly understood. So that's pretty much the themes of both of those meetings, but they're very critical on what comes up next to, next year as the legislature starts to meet, so I think we need to understand that it's going to be an exciting year of legislature this time. I don't think it's going to be one of those dull sessions. I think it's going to be very lively. Anyone have any comments on the region meeting you want to go in? I'm getting, caught your attention? Just leave me out here. All right, all right, thank you. All right, we're moving into the consent agenda. And as part of the consent agenda, doing public schools accountability procedures, and as recommended by the state auditor, three bills were randomly selected and audited by the Board. The Board also reviewed a number of reports from the Activities Fund. All procedures met state and district regulations. And so, may I have a motion then to approve the consent agenda?
I vote you present, approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. As public comment, as we move into the action items, public comment will be allowed, the public has the opportunity to provide comment on agenda items as the Board proceeds through the agenda. Comments will be limited to ten minutes. The time limit is given in an effort to allow public input, but also to move the agenda forward in a prompt, inefficient manner. So with that, we'll move then over to the action items. And I'll call in Dr. Romero for the first item.
Thank you, Mr. President, we can have a number of action items this evening. The first ones have to do with approval of budget adjustment requests. So we have a number of different items there, and so we have some different individuals that can give the Board just a quick summary of what these are. I'm going to read them off real quick, we have our operation, our K-3 Plus, our preschool IDEA B, our English language acquisition, our immigrant Title III, our Title IV, our pre-K initiatives, Title I, our family texting initiative, and our 4-5 pilot update. So with that, I'm going to start off by turning it over to Mrs. Doyle, she's going to talk to us a little bit really quickly about our operational budget adjustment request.
Thank you. Members of the Board, Dr. Romero. The operational budget, actually I worked with the maintenance department as well as the transportation department to come up with a improved process as it relates to mechanics, as it relates to, drawing a complete blank here, oh, fixing the fleet vehicles. Thank you. Previously, that had, the budget was not necessarily aligned with how we were supposed to, how we were doing that. So this budget adjustment actually takes it out of the function that is primarily transportation, and puts it into the maintenance function, which is where we actually expend the funds to repair and maintain the vehicles for the fleet.
Any questions? Any questions on the operational part? We're going to go into our K-3 Plus, we have a successful K-3 Plus month, or 25 days, and so with that, we just want to give a quick financial update to that, Mr. Will.
So the budget for both K-3 Plus and the 4-5 pilot is prepared ahead of any projections that we have for students. So when we prepare the budget, we really prepare based on who we think is going to come, and then, you know, as we wrap it up and we have actual numbers on who actually attended, then we really align the budget based on those numbers. And that's what these bars do.
Any questions with K-3 Plus or the 4-5 pilot? They're very similar. Can we move on to our IDEA B, again, Mrs. Doyle?
And this is just a carryover, we're actually increasing our initial allocation in our IDEA B fund. There's really nothing, you know, much to speak of here, except for that it's just an additional allocation that the state has given us.
Any questions?
Can we move on to our English language acquisition, Mr. Chalice?
President Anderson, members of the Board, Dr. Romero. The English language acquisition is our Title III grant, and we're just doing a maintenance bar to move money around. Our, it's going over to salaries, our language specialist had an increase in Level 2 to Level 3, and so we had money around to cover our salary.
Questions?
And Title III, Mr. Chalice?
Title III, the immigrant grant, this is the immigrant grant that we received this year, and one of the areas that we had budgeted for was student travel. But after getting the program going and in place, we determined that we didn't need student travel, so we're moving that money around and putting it into software where we can better serve kids.
Questions? Comments? Move on then.
Move on to Title, Title IV, Mr. Chalice?
Title IV is a new grant that, well, we received it last year, but it's changed significantly for this year, and this is the initial budget for the grant, and I'll be presenting more in detail the information on the program during the action items.
Questions?
Now I'm going to shift back over to Mrs. Doyle, she's going to talk to us about our pre-K initiative, don't go anywhere, Mr. Chalice.
The pre-K initiative again is just moving funds out of our salary lines into lines that are more appropriate, so that we can spend on the lines that the director deems appropriate.
Comments? Next one?
Now on to Title I, Mr. Chalice?
Title I, we have several bars, we have a transfer and two maintenance bars, and this is just cleanup, we're, we have a lot of changes that happened with staffing, different increases from levels, Level 1 to Level 2, or Level 2 to Level 3, and just moving money around to cover all our expenses in the different line items.
Questions?
And then our last budget adjustment request, this is, this is a new initiative in the district, so I'm excited about this, this is something that's going to be very valuable to our, to our families. So before that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Parker, he's going to give us a quick update on what the family texting initiative is.
Good evening, President Anderson, members of the Board, and Dr. Romero. In front of you is a new initiative that we applied for. As part of the 2018 legislative session, they adopted House Bill 2, which appropriated approximately $300,000 for the state to increase automatic test messaging for parents specifically, and for this is targeted for high school parents and families to be appraised with absences, testing, assessments, just general information for high schools. So in front of you is the result of an application that we put in, which was approved for $22,800 to bring to the development of what we're branding as the Wildcat App, that will not only benefit high school students, but all students and families across the district that will choose to download an application and allow some communication, both from various school sites, different departments they elect to set up. So the idea behind that would be that a parent could easily go in and say, "I would like updates from Dr. Romero, the superintendent, or Board, as well as the high school, and also I have a child in Red Mountain, and maybe in elementary school," and then they would receive messages directly to their phone from that messaging service. And so that would be our own Wildcat App. We'd also integrate other communication protocols for safety, cafeteria, nutrition services, athletics, instruction, embedded that as well, so it increases a more robust communication protocol. And one of the pieces that comes up a little bit different, because a lot of people say, "Well, don't we have that integrated in our current information system?" And that is true, but it also requires that you stay logged on. What this does is allows for push notifications, so if you download the app, you can elect the push notifications, and you will, you'll receive those instantly. And so that's a little bit different. And then the other thing, that it does require a cellphone number, as long as you have a cellphone with network access, you're going to be able to receive those notifications. So it does diversify the ability for parents to receive notifications without necessarily having a working cellphone, as long as they're connected to a wireless network. Through some of the information we found, more people maintain network connectivity than an actual cellphone. Cellphone numbers will change, things like that, but their ability to access information through a Wildcat App will help. So this is going to, we're going to select a messaging system partner, and they will custom build an application for us, and then we'll integrate it with our current system. So we're really excited about being able to offer that.
So it wouldn't necessarily mean that someone had to have a cellphone that was contracted with Verizon or AT&amp;T, they got to have a prepaid cellphone?
They get to have a pre, as long as they have the ability to download an app, it could be on iPad device, any device that you can download, an Apple or an Android, Android app, you'll be able to have access to it. Very similar, I believe, that the county developed an app there for a while, or the city, for Deming to allow it to get information. It'd be very similar to that, but really targeted for public schools and the information. That could come up for individual sites, departments, emergency notifications, it will just go out immediately to that.
We're going to do some sort of advertising, or do people know that it's out there?
Yes, yes, we have, a wonderful person's just come on for marketing and publicity that's going to be taking that on.
That is.
She's, she's very excited about that as well.
A list of her duties, yes.
Yeah.
President, by the way, when do you expect the launch?
Um, now, once we get this approved, then we're going to set up some basic conversation internally, and then we'll look at the parameters that we want to do, and then reach out there to about three different vendors that work with, we've got general quotes at the top end of about $15,000, as you'll see in the budget, but it may be anywhere between that. It's important to note that while this, our, it kind of covers the high school end of it, we may need to complement that with operational funds to make sure that we can offer that to every single student. We're hoping for the launch to be in the spring, and in fact, because this money can't be carried over, we need to expend that by, I'd like to expend it by May.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Dr. Romero?
Thank you, Mr. President, so with that, I do recommend the approval of all the budget adjustment requests.
Recommendation is for approval, is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, item A is accepted and approved. Item B?
Item B, thank you, Mr. President, this is for consideration of and the approval of a resolution and proclamation of a special public school capital improvement tax election. B and C are very similar, so I might talk about them at the same time, but to stick with B, this is, it's our, it's that time of year again where we are going to be up for our two-mill SB9 elections due 2019. So very quickly, what this is, is this is a funding source that we're able to get into a two-mill election, it's a six-year cycle. Basically, real simply, this is, this allows us to be able to collect $2 for every $1,000 in property taxes that are taxable. To give you some of the background of what we've been able to receive in the past, over the last six years, we generally receive about $1.16 million to $1.2 million a year. And really, what that money is used for is to be able to provide our district with preventative maintenance on our facilities. It also allows us to buy equipment for, for school use, to be able to maintain those facilities, but it also allows us to be able to have that unforeseeable type of funds there that may allow us to be able to do something like if an air conditioner goes out, or a boiler goes out. You want to be able to have a funding source to be able to supply those emergency type of situations. So with, like I talked about, we usually get, we get about $1.16 million a year out of this last two-mill SB9 funding per year, and we usually allocate about $750,000 for those unforeseeable repairs, and then we use the rest of that money for, for capital improvements at all of our school sites. Some of those improvements are going to be things like fencing projects, playground equipment, fiber optic expansion, these are all things that we've done in the past, school sign design, paving for parking lots and bus, bus drop-offs, fire alarm upgrades, things like that. And so, what we're asking for is the Board's support and to be able to, now that we're going, done with the six-year cycle, we're going to be moving into the next six-year cycle, and asking for us to be able to hold that election for our two-mill levy in SB9.
Questions? Might mention that this election is a oops on the part of the New Mexico Legislature?
So that's going to get us into C.
Into C?
Yes.
Because they changed all the voting dates for non-political elections, but they forgot to make the exception for things like SB9.
Correct.
And because we run out at the end of February, we would be without funds until November, at least.
Correct.
If we don't, if we don't do this, we have to do this at our own cost, because it's outside the new legislature.
So Item C is the consideration of an approval of a resolution authorizing and directing a special election procedure. So we can, we can finish with, we can talk about B, and then what I'm going to be asking for is for us to be able to move that, and ask for a special election, so that we don't have to hold it in November, but we can actually hold it in February, and that will allow us to not lose out on those funds for that amount of time. So this is, this is one of those things that we're having to do, and many other districts across the state are having to do, as they are moving to this new election cycle. This is one of the things for many districts as you're going through these two-mill SB9 funds, they're having to hold these special elections, so that we don't lose out on the funding locally.
Comments? Questions? No? Orders? I'm going to look then for a recommendation on B first.
On B, yes, sir, Mr. President, I do recommend that we approve the consideration of an approval of a resolution and proclamation of a special public school capital improvement tax election.
Recommended, is there a motion? It's moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B is accepted and passed, item C then?
Thank you, Mr. President, this is, again, the consideration of an approval of a resolution authorizing and directing a special election procedure. So what we're asking is for support to be able to move the, the new election date of November up into February of 2019, so it'll allow us to be able to stay on, on cycle and schedule with our current SB9000 elections.
Recommended for approval, is there a motion? It's moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I will mention that the legislature is supposed to try to fix this in the next session, so that this doesn't happen again, next time it comes around, and hopefully maybe to reimburse the school districts, which are having to, I think, for it on their own this time, so that, we will hope that session will take care of that first. All right, moving to Item D.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is for... This is for the approval of the Sentinel K-9 service contract. What this is, is we've been able to contract with a regional K-9 service to be able to provide searches or they do things like drug searches and weapon searches, things like that. It's something that we have done for the last years. It's been very successful was to make sure that we do have a safe environment for our schools. Again, this is something that we have worked with in the past. We just want to be able to continue that relationship into the future. This is for K-9 services for this full year.
Comments, questions? No? Anyone in the audience have comments or questions?
I have a question. How often do you use this?
So it happens randomly. And it happens, so with this contract, the contract's for about $5,200 last year. We're starting a little bit later this year, so it's probably going to be a little bit less than that. That allows for a certain number of visits that we have with them. They're going to be able to work with our high school, our intermediate school, or our middle school. It happens, I'm going to ask, let me ask assistance here. How many, how many times do we do this?
I would say in a semester, maybe twice.
Right, right. And so, and that's probably an average of what we do twice a semester for a per-school site. And so I think the first visit is set up for the high school for this week.
Any other questions? Can I answer anyone? If not, Dr. Romero, recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do recommend the approval of the Sentinel K-9 service contract.
Recommended for approval. Is there a motion?
No.
It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved in second and all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion is accepted and passed. Moving on to item B.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for the approval of the Title IV grant application. And with that, I'm going to turn it over again to Mr. Chavis. He mentioned it in his previous comments and he'll get to talk to us a little bit more about that Title IV grant.
President Anderson, members of board, Dr. O'Meara. Really excited to talk about the Title IV grant. The Title IV grant is broken up into three different areas. One is well-rounded education. The second is safe and healthy schools. And the third is effective use of technology. And so what we, what we've decided to do in talking to different principals, getting different feedback from teachers and such, is we're going to expand our Project Lead the Way program. As you know, as part of our CTE program over at Deming High School, one of the programs that we implement is Project Lead the Way for the pre-engineering program. And so what we're going to do with this grant and part of the grant is to take those services down to Red Mountain Middle School and Deming Intermediate. And so we're going to focus on three different areas, computer science, engineering, and biomedical science. As you can see just from the titles, these are highly rigorous type classes. And the whole goal is to develop the essential skills such as problem solving, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, perseverance. And so we've already met with the two principals and the three teachers that'll be implementing these programs. But we want to have a vertical alignment between Deming Intermediate, Red Mountain Middle School, and then over into Deming High School. So that's part, that's the first part. The second part is, Deming High School came to us very, very motivated in wanting to implement the Capturing Kids' Hearts program. And you're familiar with it because we implement that over at Deming Intermediate currently. And you know that we've gotten lots of attention, a lot of good attention that's come from them, a lot of good results. And so Deming High School would like to take that program and implement it over at their school. And the primary that that works on, that that focuses on is decreasing discipline referrals, increasing student achievement, increasing attendance rates, increasing graduation rates, and increased teacher satisfaction. And so we're really looking forward to that, being able to implement that. We'd have to wait until the summertime because we need to consecutively days of training. But we're hoping we can get that done in June for deployment and August of 2019. The third part of the grant is, will allow us to do something that I don't think we've ever done before. And that is, Mr. Parker had a meeting with the, our school counselors. And one of the things that they talked about was professional development and the touchy issues that they deal with. And so this grant is going to allow us to partner with the American School Counselors Association and offer some professional developments for our counselors in three different areas. The first one is legal and ethical complications of working with minors in schools. The second is data-driven school counseling. And the third is cyberbullying and internet safety. And so those are the three areas. And the last piece to that is being able to provide professional development for all of our administrators and/or counselors, assistant principals, TOSSAs, and restorative practices. And so it's a practice that we are looking to implement to take off from most groups of public schools is currently implementing and is showing a lot of good success in alternative measures to suspensions and such. And so it's a, it's a package that really focuses on the kids and keeping them in school. And so those, anyhow, we can offer opportunities for students and our staff. It's a good thing. And so we're really excited about this Title IV grant and we think that that's what will create opportunities for students and staff. Questions?
Questions, comments? Anything? The audience comments, questions? Dr. Romero?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am also very excited about this opportunity. I know Mr. Chavis and others have been working really hard on putting this plan together. And so we're really excited about how this is going to roll out. So with that, I do recommend the approval of the Title IV grant application.
Recommendation is for approval. Is there a motion? It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved in second and all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Item is accepted and passed. Item F?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for the approval of our school advisory committees. In your board package, you're going to see names that have been submitted to you for approval. What these representatives will do will be part of that school advisory committee. And this is an important piece in the relationships that schools have with the community and parents. They're able to advise schools on different functions and different initiatives that they're having. These are, these are going to be community members and parents that are really attempting to be more a part of that school. And so I'm very excited to be able to have these people, these parents, as part of the school and part of the decision-making that happens. And so I want, this is, this is a, this is a good thing that we have these parents doing this. So we do have the names that have been submitted for school advisory committees. And really with that, I stand for any questions. These are the people that are going to be volunteering their time to be able to improve our schools. You know what I might ask is, let me pick on a principal. There we go. Everybody's hiding all this. Melanie, can you just give us a quick, quick just idea of how you go about finding these people for our school advisory committees? And it may be a little different in these school sites, so I want to give the board just an idea about how this happens, how you build that relationship with them.
Okay, for the parents, I really tried to find parents that I know would come and provide input because that's really our main goal is to hear input from the parents to improve our processes at school. So we worked hard and we found some really eager parents that are attending our advisory meetings and providing input. The community member, I try to pick someone that's not related to the schools so that we have that community perspective. So that was real important. So the community members are not usually tied to the school system at all. They're really tied to the community.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, Mr. President, board, we stand for any questions?
Any questions, comments from board? Questions, comments from the audience? If not, recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do recommend the approval of the school advisory committees.
Recommended for approval, item F. Is there a motion? It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved in second to approve item F. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Item F is accepted and passed. Thank you. Item G?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the approval of the resolution to hold a surplus sale. And for that, I'm going to call it Mr. Wertz. He's been working very hard to make this happen and make it a reality. He's close. So my turn, Mr. Wertz, to give us an update.
Thank you. Good evening. President Anderson, members of board, Dr. Romero. What you have before you is a list of all the furniture that has been left over from Deming Intermediate, Deming High School, and Hopefack High School campus. We have been working over the past several months to a year to disperse as much of that throughout the district as we can. It was impossible to keep track of what we sent to other schools. We sent a lot throughout the district, okay? What I did capture is on the back report. But in addition, we've been able to send a lot of that to government agencies, city, county, and down into Mexico. We've sent quite a bit of furniture with Dr. Romero's approval. They want more, but we've promised the community an auction of all the surplus. So what you have before you is a list of everything that is currently staged for auction and everything that we are currently using in the classrooms of the teachers that have not yet moved into the campus. And that should be pretty, a pretty inclusive list of everything that we will have going up in this auction. So the proposal is to have a, to approve it so we can send this on to the state, I believe, and I may be speaking. We're hoping to have the auction, I think, in January, probably mid-January so we can get everything out. And I think the next phase of construction has to start in early February. So that's the timeframe.
Questions? Now, I know when we had the surplus sale for computer items, they're basically worthless. They're just paperweights is what they are. Some of this, I don't want to say this, but could be functional?
Most of it is functional. We, at our discretion, we kind of looked at what wasn't functional and what wasn't has been hauled off to the dump. If it was broken furniture, if it was, yeah, most of it was broken or really old and not functioning real well. Keep in mind, we have desks from 1950s that are still in perfect working order and they're going in the auction. So age really had nothing to do with it. It had more of the functionality to the furniture.
So there is, it's not like you're just bidding on a paperweight. If you do have computers, you might actually get something that you could use.
Correct. And we also have a whole, the bottom, the last part of the list is actually things that we have in the maintenance yard, sewage yard, that have been there a while and we don't know why we're storing them. Nobody wants them. They've been removed from playgrounds because of updated playground stuff and they're just sitting there. And so we're going to be palletizing those and moving those over into school to have auction at the same time.
Any other comments, questions? Dr. Romero?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do recommend the approval of a resolution to hold the surplus sale.
Do you have a question?
Yes, that's okay.
So where, what do we do with the proceeds?
So the proceeds that we would get would go into our operational funds.
Any other questions from Melanie? Question is that? Can you stand so we can hear you?
I'm just curious how that auction process, is it done internally or is it not like through government auction?
No, we will have an auctioneer on site and anybody can come register. And there's such a staggering amount of furniture, it's actually going to be in the bid lots. So you may be bidding on, for instance, 14 tables or 100 chairs or something to that extent.
Any idea when we're going to do it?
We're hoping, there's been talk mid-December and mid-January. So I'm pushing for January, but it'll just depend on all the approval process and how it fits in the schedule.
That depends on how quickly we get into the north end of Hopefack, too.
Correct. Yeah, if that construction gets delayed at all, everything gets pushed back again. You know, I may say that there's a lot of interest from the schools down across the border. And if we do have items that don't sell in auction, rather than taking them to the dump, we are going to be letting them come and get everything they want before it goes to demolition.
On stuff that's donated, is it just passed right off or are you not donating or has it already?
So all that will happen is we want to be able to donate to other governmental organizations. And so that's what we've done. We have been able to work sometimes with city, the county, with Columbus, and with government agencies. You know, the intent in the end is for the equipment, the materials, the desks, the chairs to be able to be put to good use. And what we don't want to see happen, if at all possible, is it can be part of the demolition and just go into the trash. So we want to be able to try to support our neighbors as much as we can. We also want to be able to have this surplus sale so that the community can also benefit from it also. So it's going to be like a red op, yes.
Good questions. Anything else? No, Dr. Romero?
Thank you, Mr. President. So with that, I do recommend the approval of a resolution to hold the surplus sale.
Been recommended to approve item G. Is there a motion? It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second and all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Item G is accepted and passed. Item H?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the, asking for the approval of revised minutes from our June 11, 2018. In your board packets under H, you're going to see there that there was just a missed typo in this. So I want to be able to take the opportunity to kind of set that record straight. We're striking the language that says to help the district with educational assistance. And it should have read to a substitute staff management agreement. So I think this has caused some confusion with that. So we want to be able to take this opportunity to correct those minutes. It's just a very simple change from educational assistance to substitute staff management agreement.
Comments, questions? Anyone in the audience have a comment or question?
I'm going to keep you all in more trouble. On June the 11th, evidently, you held a closed meeting. That was advertised as a closed meeting. In that meeting, you evidently agreed to allow Superintendent Romero to sign a contract binding the school district to hundreds of thousands of dollars to a New Jersey for-profit corporation called BSBS. That was a total violation of the New Mexico Open Meeting Act. In that same meeting, you obviously evidently authorized Denise Ronald, your HR officer, to terminate the employment of an entire class of Deming School District employees without cause and without due process. That also is a violation of the Open Meeting Act. When you violate the Open Meeting Law, any action you take is void. That means now, since the beginning of school, you have been sending, authorizing the sending of hundreds of thousands of dollars to this corporation in New Jersey. That money should never have left our district. Also, all those substitute teachers who are terminated have a right to immediate reinstatement with compensation for the benefits they lost through this action. That's the legal part of it. The ethical part of it is the same ethical part that we all who are licensed by the Public Education Department of the state of New Mexico have to follow. Commitment to professional employment practices. We regard the employment agreement as a sound pledge to be executed both in spirit and in fact in a manner consistent with the highest ideals of professional service. Sound professional personnel relationships with governing boards are built upon integrity, dignity, and mutual respect between employees, administrators, and local school boards. In fulfilling our obligations to professional employment practices, we adhere to and respect the conditions of a contract or the terms of an appointment until either has been terminated legally or by mutual consent. The substitute teachers did not consent. Now, this is a very small Now, this is a very small community. We don't have a very large job pool. With less than a week's notice, this district threw about 100 people onto the Deming job market. Now, at any one time, unless you're an M D N R N or a C D L driver, there may be five or six jobs available in Deming. And those are Walmart, Walgreens, or Wendy's for the most part. So these people had no choice. Most of them had no choice because this job meant support for their families. And many of these substitute teachers are parents, they have children in our district. They support sometimes disabled people and their families. They were given no choice. They had to apply and be hired by this outfit from New Jersey. Very similar to human trafficking, you take vulnerable people and you give them no choice. They didn't want to do this, but they did this because they had no choice. That's the unconscionable part of it. I have discussed this matter with the state agencies that have authority in our district. I'm sure you may have heard from some of them, you will here for more. But if you continue to send this money without proper contract in place, then you are in serious violation. Now, I don't know if you've read this agreement with DSS, I've read every word. Have you read it? Right on its face, it violates the Families Educational Rights and Privacy Act. That's, that's a class four felony. Because in that contract, you agree to allow ESS to know, quote, "any students with violent tendencies." We don't label our students. And we certainly do not discuss our students with outsiders. We're very careful about discussing them among ourselves or with their parents. And that's federal law. What does your comment is, Chris?
Any minute, please continue.
There's no comments. You need to finish so you're going to run out of time now.
Yes. To put in conclusion, you have taken a group of people who were so loyal. These people did nothing wrong. No, they gave you no reason to be terminated. They did more right than you had any right to expect. You haven't given them a raise in at least 20 years. They all put in more time than they're paid for. Many of them are more highly educated and have more educational experience than anyone in this room and, and maybe anyone in the entire school district. These people come because they want to. They love to be here, they love to be with the children, they respect our teachers, our teachers, we have wonderful teachers. I'm just, I'm so disappointed. I taught in this district for 10 years until since, until Chua. I'm grieving because I miss, but I will not support and attempt to privatize our school district or to sell our people back to it at a 31% profit. And that's exactly what we've done.
Any other comments? Are you, you talking about the?
I am.
The minutes, or are you talking about the?
No, my name is Sandra Matlinhan. This is my, I'm Terry. I am Stan Matt on the internet, Facebook. You need to know something before you change.
Okay, now you're off topic. This is not what we're talking about. We're talking about the item that is coming up, this iPad of E, of mine. We're talking about the correction to the minutes, that's all we're talking about.
It's not correction. The minutes are a public record.
That's right, and they're what we're correcting.
You change them, you are committing a four-class felony.
So we need to move on now because you're talking about.
Are you telling me the state is wrong?
Well, that's not the topic we're talking, dealing with right now.
I have filed with the attorney general.
I'm aware of that.
They already have all of the minutes.
That's fine.
All of the agenda.
All of the violations that you have done.
Okay.
And now.
I gave you a choice.
Let's, let's, we're not over topic, thank you. Any other, anything else on revising the minutes? If not, Dr. Romero?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do recommend the approval of the revised minutes for June 11, 2018.
Recommended for approval, is there a second? Pardon me, a motion? Is there a second? And moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed? Thank you. That is accepted. Moving on then to, I, Dr. Romero?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for the approval of the ESS West LLC substitute staff placement agreement. We've been able to work with this company for a few weeks now, and we've had some wonderful results coming from this. And I'm really happy to be able to share those results now that we have some data to be able to show to the board. So thank you for allowing me to do this. As we know, substitutes are a vital part of success in the school district. With that, we want to be able to have every day be as educationally sound as possible for our students. But there are times when, you know, teachers may be sick. We work for professional development, they're working on planning and, and working to make it a school a better place. So for that, we have to have substitutes come in. So a vital part of our school district. What we have done is we want to be able to provide a better model for that. Students are in school about 176 days a year. We want every one of those 176 days to be as efficient as possible. And so when teachers are out, we want to make sure that we have a good substitute in place to be able to continue that educational environment. What we've had in the past, and you know, I've worked for a number of school districts, so this is not unique to Deming, is that it's hard to always fill those positions. We have a number of, of times where there is no position that is filled because of a substitute. And so then that causes kind of ripple effect because then the school still has to be able to fill those positions. So then you may have a teacher having to cover for another teacher, you may have to have an educational assistant helping with the classroom. And that affects the entire school, and that has another ripple effect on, affecting the entire school district. So we, we did a lot of research with this. We were able to work and look at, we were looking at some solutions to how we could do this. And one of the things that we were able to find was this idea of being able to work with a, another company to be able to help us support, making sure that we had these jobs filled to a much better rate than what we were doing. With that, we are also able to see that there was one of these vendors that had a lot of success in many other states and also had success in this state. And so we were able to work, look at some of the, the history and the success of other states and other school districts along with another school district in New Mexico. And we made the decision to, to, to do this because it was something that was going to be best for kids. And so with that, I want to turn it over to some of our visitors today. These are representatives from ESS, and they're going to give us, they have an opportunity to be able to give us an update on what's happened over the last couple of months. I'm really excited to be able to do that. I also have with us, I also don't want you to just hear it from me. I want you to be able to hear it from the end users, what's happening at the school sites. So we do have a number of principals here that are able to speak to this tonight. We do have some secretaries that are able to speak to this. We do have some teachers to speak to this, and we do have some substitutes to speak to this. So very, if you, if you do us honor, we'd like to be able to quickly give you an update on where we are with this project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joseph Redd.
President Anderson, members of the board, Secretary Romero. We're delighted to have the opportunity to support Deming Public Schools. I'd like to introduce some colleagues from ESS. Steve Klosik is our chief operating officer. My name is Fred Benson. I work in partnerships with districts across the state of New Mexico. Joseph Fitzgerald is our regional manager. David Paul, senior vice president. Lorena Sanchez, the, the title doesn't do it. That's just, Lorena does. We're just so blessed to have the opportunity to work with Miss Sanchez. Debbie French, trainer, professional learning specialist. Finding enough substitute teachers is vital to a school district. You know this. What I want to highlight very quickly is, is our entire organization exists for one specific function, and that is to partner with school districts to ensure that you have enough high-quality substitutes for your classrooms and for your schools. This is a challenge across the state of New Mexico. This is a challenge across the United States of America. This impacts student achievement, student instruction, how the school works every day. It impacts safety and security to make sure that there is the right person in front of that room. When we had the opportunity to begin dialogue with the school district last spring, I tried to capture the four points or the four goals or the four reasons that Deming Public Schools was looking at this. And number one was improving efficiency. How can we most effectively and efficiently ensure that the right folks are in the right rooms at the right times? Two, it was made very clear by the administration that, that substitutes are an important part of the community and an important part of the district. So how can we work to have a strong, quality substitute pool receiving the support and, 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 and attention that they deserve? Three, numbers, making sure that there's the right number of substitutes in the rooms. Fill rate means how many subs do you need a day and how many subs are showing up on time, ready to go. And then community involvement, making sure that this is done in a manner that is, that is part of the community and, and brings more jobs to the members of the community. So I'm going to introduce Joseph, I already introduced Joseph, but Joseph's going to walk through. These are the discussion items, these are the promises, these are the goals at the beginning, and, and we're delighted about the progress of this partnership so far. And Joseph's going to bring data and specifics to that dialogue.
Thank you, Fred. President Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Romero, a pleasure to be here today. First off, to talk a little about improving efficiencies, since we've been able to work with Deming, we've been able to enhance your approval process for your absences. We sat down, we reevaluated that so that the correct supervisors and department heads of the different absences were able to approve those absences, so they were aware of what was going on in approving that. We also were able to have consistent supplemental absences.